I will look here and see when we have all the board members. Present. All right, I believe we have all. Board members present. We have. Looks like a few other administration people who may not have. Been able to. Get their connections going quite yet, so we will give them a little time, but. In the meantime, I would like to see if I can get a motion to bring us out of exec and bring us into public session. Monica seconded by Judy. All right, we are now in. Public session. So I will we start with the. With the greetings here before we get into the actual. Business, but I want to welcome one to the March 24th, 2020 meeting of the Edgemont Board of Education. I ask for your patience. This is our first time obviously trying it this way. I am quite sure there will be some. Some glitches and some bumps, so if you'll just bear with us, we will do our best to. Make this work. Right now I see a lot of administrative. Members, but it looks like Victoria, according to this Victoria and. Oh, it says video. So hold on a second. And I will reach out to them and then we will. Victoria can hear, so that's good. Jen Allen, if you could let me know if you can hear. There with me a second. Okay, okay, I think at this point we have. Everyone we need on the call. So again, for those of you who are. And I know some people are saying they don't, some people administration don't have. Video, like we're not going to worry about video at this point. They're not going to try and troubleshoot that. It's not. Critical in any way, shape or form, since we are not broadcasting or recording video. So for those of you who don't have it, don't worry about it. As long as you can hear us, then we're all good. So again, to those of you who are joining us on the phone. We thank you. We. Will. If you go to the link that was on the page that got you in the first place, you can see the agenda. You can see any of the. Presentations that will happen tonight. We are going to, I think, hold off on. Questions from the public until after the superintendent's report, because I think there's going to be. Information there that may cover some of the questions that people have. So I'm going to ask till. We'll probably open up so you can start any entering your questions somewhere during the presentation, but we're going to hold off on. Accepting any questions until then, and then I'll talk more about how we're going to handle the actual questions. Once we get there. So with that, I just want to make sure Victoria, you can. You can hear.
Yes, I can hear and speak. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Okay, so our first order of. Business and actually. And then I will on board votes. Will do what we've been doing. So when I ask for. Motions, if you can do as you've been doing, raise your hand. To. Put your motion, and I think we'll do the same thing for voting. If you can raise your. Hand in the console when we vote, and then I will pass on. I think Rosemary can see them, but I will pass on to everyone what the result of the the vote was. So our first order of business is approval of the March. 10 minutes. Do I have a motion to approve John Fouse, second Judy? All in favor? That we are unanimous and Rosemary, just for your records, Niles is not able to participate tonight. So we are approved. For the minutes, next order of business is the February treasurer's report. Can I get a motion to approve? Marikita second by Judy, all in favor? Again, raising hands for all of those in favor. We had unanimous. Next. Is well next on the agenda is recognition of. Recognition of community. We have. Hold on a second. We have nothing specific on the agenda for recognition of community. So as I said. I will hold off on. Having people ask questions until after we get, at least through part of the superintendent's. Report. So with that, Victoria, we move on to acceptance of gifts.
Yeah, so we have to ask the board's approval of some very generous gifts. What one is on behalf of. The Regeneron Science Talent Search $2,000. To Edgemont High School requested to be designated to.
I'm so sorry to interrupt, but we lost both Pamela and Marikita to audio issues, so I I just making you aware of that. Maybe we can wait until they come back.
I'm here. I'm here. It's just Pamela.
Okay.
It's Pamela. And so let's give her a minute just to see if she's.
Looks like.
Yep, looks like.
Pamela, Marikita, both there? I'm here.
Yes. So if we can maybe start over on that one.
The board's approval on two gifts. One of. From Regeneron Science Talent Search for $2,000 for EHS. Requested to be designated to further support excellence in science, math and or engineering education at the high school. And this is award is a recognition of EHS student Takaharu Uraaki. And Edgemont PTSD $390 pizza for the seventh and eighth grade GA community building opportunity. I know there was recently a GA community building opportunity, and I hope it was for that one and not one that was scheduled for this week. We asked the board to approve of those gifts.
Pamela, did you have a question? Okay, so if I can have a.
I don't have a question. I just trying to get this thing working.
Okay, no worries. No worries. It looks like I have motion to approve. Looks like I have John seconded by Monica, all in favor. Looks like it passes unanimously. Thank you all. And once again, we always are so thankful to our various partners who. You know, make these generous gifts that help us do things that we could not. Otherwise do. So with that, we are going to move on to. Superintendent's report. I will just again, for those who are dialed in. On the the page that you gave you the information. On how to. Dial in, there was also, there are also. There's a link there for it says link to BOE agenda and presentations on board docs. If you follow that link, you will see in board docs, the full. Agenda and actually on the first item are links to the two presentations. So if you want to. Follow along as the the speakers talk, you can find the the presentations there. And with that, I will turn it back to Victoria.
Great, thank you. Paul, are you going to be able to show the screen so that the board members can see it all on one screen?
Yes, I'll share that now.
Thank you. So for the those listening in, as Alex said, you can follow along. On on board docs for the board members, it should be up on this coming up on the screen in front of you. But as that's coming up, I just wanted to. Talk a little bit, set the context for these extraordinary times. We are moving from a K-12 classroom based. Educational model to a distance learning model. And and what's different about that is. We've heard from a lot of people who've asked why we can't just teach a course online. Like they do at the university level, or why we can't have a platform like they do at a corporate level. And the biggest difference is. That the the online courses were designed to be online courses. With K-12 public education, as you know, has a very long history. Of classroom face to face instruction. So we are modifying and creating as we go. I've described it a couple of times as building a plane while we're flying. And as always, that student well being is our first concern, and we're protecting and building and working toward. That teacher, student and content or learning relationship that's so core for an education. And during these times, I'm reminded of Abraham Maslow's hierarchy of need. And I feel like the last week and as we were working up to the closing of school, we were dealing with physiological needs. The the needs of making sure everyone was safe, needs of food, needs of water. And I think a lot of us are finding ourselves in those places now, and and now we're moving toward that. Distance learning education and my colleagues and I, I can't say enough about the amazing job. They have been doing so. Of course, I'm trying to see it on another doc, Paul, and I can't. Thank you. So I talked about our decisions being focused on health and safety. We are also required to provide food for free and reduced lunch students, and we do have a relationship. With local businesses that are helping with that and providing food to our students who qualify. We have daycare available for medical workers and first responders who have no other options. And that's being provided through the White Plains YWCA at their site in White Plains. And since public school districts are considered essential government entities, we have been working, all of our administrators and clerical. Have been working both in district and remotely. When we're in district, we stay apart from each other and each day. We get closer and closer to be able to be fully remote. We've had daily meetings with the administrative team and the school district physician, and that's all happening on Google Hangouts. We have a communication plan to inform the parents and students on a daily basis. I've had weekly calls with the Westchester County Executive Department of Health, State Education Department and Governor's Office. And what a characteristic of these times for me certainly has been collaboration, collaboration among all of us. The the board members, the administrators, faculty and staff, but also with my local Southern Westchester superintendents. And I have to say that the communication has been great. Between and among all of the agencies when we need help, they're there for us, and we've set up regular calls. So I'm going to pass it off to Sue Shirkin. And talk a little bit about the business continuity.
Hey, thank you. The business office is setting up and conducting business both remotely and in person. The remotely is coming along slowly, but we are really almost there. Some things we cannot do remotely. We are able to meet payroll accounts payable and other state reporting requirements. We're staying on top of all of that. We are negotiating transportation for the unknowns of this year and for next year. I'm setting up transportation for private schools for next year, and applications are due on April 1st. We are keeping track of specific expenses related to COVID-19, things that were not in this budget. We are trying to shorten our timelines to be proactive and ready to. Ready to return to work when possible. Those things that we might be doing on a May or June timeline, we're trying to do now. While we are home so that when we return. We can make up for things that we're quite able to do. And I've had daily correspondence with the Southern Westchester business officials. We have a communication group and it's been very active, helping one another and. Keeping informed. So we're all kind of doing the same thing throughout the school districts in Southern Westchester. If there aren't any questions, I'll cast that on to Paul. I think you're next on technology.
Actually, I think I moved John McCabe up who had a timing.
Okay.
John, are you on? I know John had a. Time of.
Constraint today, right?
He did. He did. So I can speak to facilities, John's. Oh, here. Yes, I can be here, John. So I'll speak to facilities. They have been doing an amazing job from from the time they started disinfecting daily. Well, even prior to that, but then. Since they've been disinfecting daily, we still have a skeleton crew on site in all buildings. They've been escorting faculty and students to rooms for materials, but we're trying to end that as of this week.
Hi, Victoria.
Oh.
Yeah, I tried the hand raise. It didn't work. I'll just go with the.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. You are much better. Go ahead.
I'll take up where you left off there. We're also monitoring space usage and disinfecting is needed, you know, as people come into work in the district, we get in behind them when they leave and. Disinfect the space that they're working in, where they might be eating and the lavatory facilities that they will use. We're also checking building systems and removing trash from the properties daily. We're processing payroll and vendor payments to be processed through finance manager. We're continuing with necessary service repairs and deliveries for the facilities. We're also planning a work process to have a contractor come in and start the fire alarm project at the Sealy Elementary School. In case there's a absence of sight learning, that that's an extended duration.
Great. Thanks, John. And I think it gets passed to Paul, the technology.
Hi. Like everyone else, the technology department has been working around the clock to support our faculty and staff and students. Currently, we have about 1,300 Chromebooks that are deployed for remote instruction and learning. That includes our. Students in our one to one program and faculty and faculty really across the board. That was in need of a device to facilitate remote instruction and learning. We have been over the past couple of years, moving most of our applications and services to the cloud. So. We were in very good shape when it comes to our our critical services. In particularly our K-12 instructional technology applications. We have been conducting virtual support and workshops on using instructional technology for remote learning. Amidst a number of other virtual meeting places between departments and grade levels. Which I'm sure Mike will speak a little bit more to that in curriculum and instruction, but the technology has really. Helped us facilitate being together in remote locations. We have established, we had an established remote access through VPN to our Windows network. And most recently, we adopted VPN access for our business administrators and other administrators for our financial system and. Working on an additional access for our student information system and the custom report server. We have established a device repair support location by appointment only. At the high school and those links can be found in a number of places, including the technology department website. We are continuing to receive all of our services through the Lyric, which is our our local BOSIs. And all the vertical support through systems and infrastructure and instructional technology that they always provide to us. And as Sue said, we we have established workstations for all essential employees, including. Devices, printers and remote access. And I'll turn that over to, I'll turn it over to Mike now. Mike, are you there?
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Victoria. Thank you, Alec and members of the board. Obviously, curriculum and instruction is really on the minds of a lot of people as we've been. Forced to quickly. Switch our entire. Our entire model of delivery and instruction for students aging from five to 18 or 19. Practically overnight. So beginning in early March, we started to meet, we had brought together an online learning group. Before we even realized exactly what was going to happen, but we suspected there might be some interruption in the school calendar. They met to create the the initial. Remote learning plan that we're working under right now, and then they met again. Last Friday, I believe, and then again today, we met virtually, and they're really responsible. They're really responsible for the plan, and that's a multidisciplinary team of teachers. From including both. From all grade levels as well as administrators. And so they have been working extremely hard to create that initial plan. We sought. Feedback from parents, from students, from teachers to understand what their questions and concerns were as we really. Started this new mode of instruction. The existing plan was really based upon an assumption of a relatively short closing, at least even if it was longer. The idea was to at least get us through the first two weeks as we worked to. Look at what instruction would look like in an extended closure. It looks like we're there now. Most importantly, because most of the feedback that we've received has been, thank you so much. You guys are doing a great job. When will we be able to have some live interaction between kids and their teachers? And so we have, that has been a main focus of integrating that into the next plan. That will go into effect shortly, not immediately, because we're still hammering out some of the details. But we are definitely going to be providing students with both. Pre-recorded video of their teachers' teaching as well as synchronous online Google Hangouts. Where they can interact with their teachers. We have been, as as people have been really struggling to get up to speed, teachers are meeting with their colleagues. Multiple times per week, virtually to share what's working, what's not working. And also participating in online professional development with other districts as well. So we are really working hard to to keep our students learning. We are struggling with a lot of different issues. Everything from assessment to attendance and beyond that we're trying to hammer out, and we're making progress, but. Yeah, we are definitely working through it and expect to have. Firm sort of phase two plan towards the end of this week. And I'm not sure who comes after me.
Pupil personnel.
Thank you.
Dr. Shippa.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So on. And I share, I, one of the things that I can say about this is that in a time like this. You're very grateful to have teams of people who help you. Not just within the district, but outside of the district as well. People Personnel Services deals with a lot of. Legal information regarding students with five section 504 plans, CPSE, those are our preschoolers, CSE. And um, and we're at a very. Interesting point that this happened to us. It was at the beginning of our annual review season where we review all of the students' plans and programs. To determine whether we're, you know, what what kinds of services would continue on for next year. And at the same time, we're still getting new initial referrals to the committee on. On special education. So our teams are working really, really hard. We did a major Google hangout. Ed Stickles and I did a major Google hangout with. Entire pupil personnel department, which amounts to almost 60 people, which surprised both of us because we didn't realize there were so many. Because you're looking at providers and special education teachers and related service people. And so we did that right up front to sort of give them some direction. Because of the legalities of what we're dealing with, there are timelines that we have to meet. I wish I could tell you that where where that all is in terms of how the state and federal government are working with this. Dilemma, but it isn't the most efficient experience. They are, the federal government is sending guidance documents almost daily. To us and to our school attorney. But those guidance, the guidance that it's giving us sometimes seems to be. You know, at odds as as they keep working through it to determine what we can and we cannot do. So our Google Hangouts, we, the regional directors, all of the directors in the area began a Google Hangout. At 10 a.m. every single morning. And the majority of us in in the region are getting on those Google Hangouts to really figure out. You know, what's going on and to share our experiences. We have contact with the school attorney for updates on federal and state guidelines. As I said. We are doing hangouts with special education teachers, related service providers, as well as our office assistants. Karen and Amanda, who were actually onsite for a good portion of this and have now sort of moved over to the remote side. And we're able to do, Ed and I are meeting with them every other, probably every other day. As well as receiving phone calls from them and emails on a pretty regular basis. They're working pretty hard to schedule initial meetings, reschedule annual reviews. As well as trying to field correspondence that comes to them directly about various provider questions. And things that need to be taken care of. We're scheduling, as I said, scheduling CPSE, CSE, section 504 meetings. Conducting CPSE, CSE and section 504 meetings as as well virtually. So we did cancel meetings until next week, so we had to move some meetings that were already on the calendar. However, Ed has continued with CPSE meetings because he has a lot of kids that he's reviewing for CPSE, and then those those students. Have to be determined as to whether they are going to go on into transition meetings over for CSE possible. And then those, those students have to be determined as to whether they are going to go on into transition meetings over, for CSE possible, CSE services. So it's like double duty on that. So we didn't want to lose track of that. We are in full force beginning Monday, the thirtieth, with meetings again that will be done remotely. Psychologists who are our CSE chairs typically for a lot of our annual reviews. We've done Google Hangouts with them to prepare them for these meetings and have a system where we'll be able to, to do those with a call-in with all the required members of the CSE as well as parents. We're giving daily guidance to PPS staff regarding the process, procedures and questions that they may have. There are a lot of questions. As you might imagine, students with 504 plans and IEPs, it's difficult to deliver individualized instruction for these students. So we're trying to figure out different ways in which to support those students going forward. As Mike mentioned before, as we look a little bit more at how we're going to be delivering our distance learning plan, we'll have a better idea of how much more individualized support those students who are struggling will need and we'll try to respond to that in a, in a timely manner. We're in contact with contracted providers regarding our distance learning. As you might imagine, these contracted providers who provide sometimes home-based services or services that are in their own offices are unable to see students because of the, the possible contagion. So there are, there's some talk about some providers being able to do this in, in a, you know, virtually with some students. We're trying to decide which students would benefit from that most. I will put that out, put it out to you that of great concern of, for, for Ed and I and of the department is, you know, our neediest kids in our ICAP program. Those are students that may very likely not benefit as much from a virtual kind of platform. So we're looking at how we can support parents in providing the kinds of work that those students need. I will give kudos to the ICAP teachers. They did an incredible job preparing materials in advance. And they had parents, they had contacted parents in advance of, of the potential for this closing. They put together bins of things and those teachers are also meeting as a group with the parents to assist the parents in guiding them on the materials that they gave them. That includes assistive technology devices and communication devices that those students need. So we're also communicating with parents and staff regarding referrals and meetings. I'm getting a lot of questions from parents who got a letter from me and Ed regarding the cancellation of meetings and when those would be scheduled. And we're off and running with that. As I said, our team approach is the best approach. We've had Paul involved with this and Mike involved with this and helping us get up and running with how to do Google Hangouts and teaching Amanda and Karen how to transfer some tricky kinds of technology to use together with IEP Direct, which is our frontline, our frontline-based module and platform that we, we work with to, to create individual education plans. And we're also involved and especially Ed in contact with the county Department of Health and CPSE chairs regarding the CPSE services. Those are services that really come from the county. So when you've got county, state and federal guidelines, you can only imagine the mess that's involved with that. Everybody's got a different interpretation. So we're working carefully. I cannot say enough about the PPS support team in the business office. Karen and Amanda have been amazing to work with and are really getting up to speed on the kinds of things that we need to do. And that's kind of, that's kind of like the snapshot of where we are at this particular moment. I will say that we're also developing very nice partnerships with the surrounding districts as well. One of the things that we've been alerted to by our attorneys is that there may be a need for some type of compensatory services. If we don't open, you know, or we have a really extended period of not opening for some kids that might regret. We may have to look at providing compensatory services for them. So I've already opened the doors to some of our neighboring districts about how we might share in that experience. Maybe we would, you know, host some type of compensatory services for certain students with certain profiles and they might host others. And then we'll have to figure out how that could work out. And that will be where Sue comes into the picture to take a look at, you know, how we fund those kinds of things.
Thank you, Joe. Passing along to Anthony for athletics. Anthony DeRosa.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's doing well. So far, the athletic update, the Section One Executive Committee is scheduled to meet next week to reevaluate the status of spring sports, which are currently suspended. The New York State Public High School Athletic Association approved two provisions. That's going to allow more participation opportunities to student athletes when spring sports resume. Those are an extension of the spring season if it's needed, we're able to do that. And they're waiving the seven-day consecutive rule where teams will now be able to practice play on seven consecutive days where previously we're only able to go on six consecutive days. The date that students are able to return to school is going to play a significant role in the subsequent length of the spring sports season and ultimately how the season is going to be structured. In terms of what we're continuing to do, the nurses' office has continued to review physical information and medically clear students for athletics. The athletics office has continued to review registrations and approve students for athletic participation. We're using Family ID, an online platform. So this has helped us be able to do these things remotely. Currently working with our coaches to help keep our student athletes engaged, providing them with some individual workouts and drills they can do on their own while maintaining required social distancing guidelines. Also providing.
Hear us, but we, we're not hearing you right now.
Anthony, can you hear us?
Is everyone able to still hear me?
Yes.
Now we are.
I'm not sure what the last thing everybody heard was.
Go with where you are.
Okay, so just to reiterate, we're going to have coaches connect with students twice a week, which is in line with what we're currently doing academically. And they're going to be using the platform, SportsU, which is an online web-based platform and also has an app as well. So for example, Mondays, they'll provide workouts and drills for that particular week. They're going to do that in conjunction with our conditioning advisor, Pete Lawren. And then on Thursday, they'll provide some strategic materials, sets, plays, situational scenarios, et cetera, through written text, visuals or online videos. Modified Sports was officially supposed to begin this past Monday, the twenty-third. I've emailed all the seventh and eighth grade parents over the weekend to ensure all who want to participate are registering on Family ID or have that opportunity. We're going to be providing clearance links. We did that today to the coaches along with parent emails so they can set up access with their team groups on SportsU and engage their student athletes as well. And the athletic office is continuing to work on fall scheduling remotely and will adjust spring schedules accordingly when we know more from the section of when we're going to resume. Going to turn it over now to high school principal, Kyle Hojer.
Hi, everyone. Before I begin, I feel like I need to share the story, a conversation I had with my mother earlier this evening. We had a, a phone call and five minutes into the conversation, I said I needed to get back to work. And she said, well, I thought schools were closed. What do you have to do? Which then prompted me to tell her exactly everything that I'm about to tell you. And by the end of the conversation, she said, okay, sounds like you're busy. And we are busy because so much of what we're doing now is new. Many times we look at situations and we have a sense of, of what we should be doing, but this is all uncharted territory. So we are having many of the same meetings we would have if school was in session, but things take longer. And so we tend to be meeting more often than we would when school was in session. So some of these meetings include the grade level team meetings for grades seven, eight and nine. Our monthly department meetings are now being held weekly. And because there are so many questions, we have to make sure there's at least one administrator at each of these meetings, if not two. Our leadership meetings, which consist of department chairs and grade level team leaders, we used to meet every other week. We're now meeting a minimum of, of once a week. We are meeting regularly with counselors and psychologists to check in. We know that it's tough for students, it's tough for anyone to have to socially distance. And so we just want to make sure that, that students are doing well and are being supported. We have almost daily meetings with the junior, senior high school administration team with my colleagues, Ms. Johnson and Mr. Paul. We have daily meetings with administrators across the district. And just because we're out of school, that doesn't mean that we don't have regular meetings with parents and students. We're just doing them in different ways at this point. If you think about some of our immediate areas of focus, Mike spoke about this. The distance learning design and support is something that's taken up a lot of time. Junior, senior high schools were not built on this, this idea. So we had a plan in place. We were fortunate to receive a ton of helpful feedback from students, parents and faculty. And so we're now in a position where we want to implement that feedback and create a new plan with the assumption that we might be out for, for longer than the two weeks. If we think about some of the troubleshooting that we have to do, so there are a lot of things that we normally wouldn't have to tackle, but we do now. So if you think about AP exams being changed, if you think about SATs being rescheduled, school events being canceled, thinking about how do we handle quarter three grades? So, you know, on, on the one hand, it could, people might think you just move forward, you give students grades, but it's not quite that simple. There's a lot of thinking that has to go into that. And then if you start to look at quarter grades, what does that mean for transcript grades? So we're, we're having a lot of conversations around how to address grade concerns. We had a seventh grade parent meeting that was supposed to occur later in the month and that meeting's not going to happen. So we met with counselors earlier today to think about how can we still share that information in a thoughtful way? But also make sure we're addressing, you know, the concerns and the idea that people have a lot going on right now. So what can we share now? What can wait till September? And we're spending a lot of time trying to communicate with all different stakeholders. So as we're making these decisions, we need to talk to a bunch of different people to make sure we're making good decisions. And as we are able to finalize some details, we want to share those, but recognize that there's still a lot of issues that, that we still need to resolve. The, the other thing that we're constantly thinking about is students' wellbeing and work completion. So how do we make sure that students are in a good place, that they're keeping up with their work? Normally, we would have individual conversations with teachers and counselors. We're not able to do that as easily. So a, a new structure we're just putting into place to make sure we can track patterns of student work to address any issues that students may be having. And then long-term areas of focus. So we have all these immediate concerns, but we're still in a place where we need to make sure that we're thinking ahead. So scheduling for the 2020, 2021 school year, there's a lot of work that goes into that. All that work still needs to be done. And so that's something that every day we're, we're thinking and we're working on. Thinking about hiring for the 2020, 2021 school year. We don't expect to have to hire a ton of new faculty and staff, but we know we do have some additions that we need to make. And although I didn't add it to our list because it just felt like it would, it's too much to think about now. Thinking about long-term, what the potential for a new master bell schedule might look like down the road is, is another area that we're thinking about. So we, we have a lot that is unknown, but fortunately, I think we have a good team that's working together. And we've got a great community who's given us good feedback to help move us in the right direction. With that, I'll turn it over to Eve and Jen.
Hi, everyone. It's Eve. I'm going to go first. Can you all hear me okay? Okay, so I want to start off by saying that I definitely never went into education to be working away from people. So I have to agree with what a lot of my colleagues have been saying, which is it's so hard to be away from the kids at a time like this. And we've been hearing, and if there are community members listening, continue to communicate with your administrators and your teachers because we love to hear from you. It's really hard to be at home away from all the kids. In the meantime, we have been unbelievably busy with a lot of adults. Between faculty and staff and administrators and the custodial staff, we are all hands on deck from about five in the morning. I'm not joking, until ten at night. And those who know me know that I am usually asleep by now. We, like EHS, we have been having weekly Google Hangout meetings. We do it based on the grade level with at least one administrator there. We are meeting with all the related service providers, so that's speech therapists, occupational therapists, school psychologists, English as a second language. We're meeting with the whole department for specials, the whole PE department, the whole music, art, library. We're also meeting with our CSCE, with the aides and catching up with them, finding out what they're doing. We've started to hold professional development with them and it has been actually such a positive experience. We're holding our weekly child study team meeting like EHS, making sure that we're still meeting all the needs of our students, even though they're not in our actual classrooms or in our virtual classrooms. So what can we do to continuously meet the needs of our students when they're not sitting at desks and chairs in front of us? We're meeting daily with our administration team. I am so grateful to have Ms. Wong and Ms. Farrara join me and Ms. Allen because I don't think I could do this all on my own. I continuously say thank you. I appreciate you because we really are an amazing team together and we're really trying our best here. We're also part of the district cabinet meetings that have been incurring. We have been constant communication with parents. I've been getting emails from students to just checking in. I think for our youngest learners, this is hard. I mean, they, they miss their schools. They love school. Every Monday morning, it's like the happiest place to be is back at school for many of these kids. So this is a long time to be without school. And then like Joe said, we're starting to prepare for the annual review. So we're meeting with our special ed departments to talk about how we can meet the needs for next year. And Jen will get a little bit into that. But I do want to say thank you to the elementary school parents and for my administrative team because I, and the teachers. I don't know how we could do this without all of you. I am so grateful for the faculty and staff that we have and the team that we're part of. So Jen, it's all you.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, I was trying to use a microphone and I guess it wasn't working. Apologies. Okay, so anyway, yeah, just to, I just want to also agree with all the things that Kyle and Eve have said and just add my, my thanks to all the teachers who are just doing an unbelievable job. The custodians and all my administrative colleagues and the clerical. This is just something we never could have imagined. We would be in this situation. And in a fairly short time, we've put together a pretty impressive program. And, you know, as Eve said, it's incredibly tough emotionally for everybody as well. And, you know, as Eve said, it's incredibly tough emotionally for everybody as well. You know, we all got into this business to be with kids in person and with our colleagues. And, you know, we we look forward to getting back together with them because our schools are very happy places. But we're doing the best we can to try to replicate that remotely. So to just get into the the a little more about the areas that we've been focusing on in these many meetings that Eve was talking about. We we have our overarching goal of working collaboratively with colleagues to focus on how to develop the most effective distant learning program that we can. But we're constantly through various committees and working with our grade level colleagues and department colleagues already thinking about how to adjust what we're doing for potentially longer term instruction and how the and thinking about how the administrators can support the teachers in doing that to support their daily implementation as well as supporting the the student needs. And right now that's coming mostly through trying to support their parents who are reaching out to us a lot. But we we're working as a team to figure out how to more directly have the administrators also be able to support the kids more directly. Some of this work includes looking at the content curriculum. We already had a very rich digital resource library. And so we're taking our primary digital resources like Science 21 Foundations and Think Central, which is the online component of Math and Focus, and figuring out how to apply it as best we can remotely to enhance the distance instruction. At the same time, we're exploring additional online resources, app-based or web-based programs like Flipgrid or Seesaw or Epic. And trying to figure out also about designing projects, project-based learning and other types of projects that kids can do at home to so have reached out beyond our own district. We've been working with colleagues in other districts, sharing ideas and resources. Recently, many of us participated in a joint professional development program that was countywide. It had over 1,000 educators who participated in and led sessions. And Marisa Farrara, for example, led a session on supporting young readers remotely. So we've really tried to branch out beyond just Edgemont and connect with our whole county. We've also been sending biweekly updates to the elementary families to try to get push out information to them. And we're starting to talk about how we can do things that connect more to the kids on a on a daily or every second day that could just be more fun and try to make them feel more connected and enlighten their experience. We're we're all getting a lot of parent emails. We're spending a lot of time responding to that. There's also the other staff that we that we deal with besides the teachers, the clerical staff, the nurse. They, we have been working with them on how to transfer their responsibilities to remote locations, and so far that's going really well. And there is an entire professional development plan that's already started with the aides that's focused on enhancing their knowledge of social emotional learning mindfulness and positive reinforcement. And we're using the Sanford Harmony portal for that as well as online resources and videos. And the aides actually being given sort of assignments to do to reflect on that work and then present feedback to us, and we're going to be starting virtual hangout meetings with the aides next week. The the other current thing we're doing is trying to figure out what assessment would look like to assess student learning and growth, and then how can we record that student learning and growth in report cards? It's currently actually right now is when we're supposed to be working on the next elementary school report card. Obviously, that would have to be the timeframe of what that represents has to be modified to a shortened timeframe, but we're going to have to figure out what the final report card also would look like. So those are some of the current things that we've really been focusing on. Long term, once we figure out how, what, how long this closure may be, that's going to affect some decisions about programs and field trips and other types of experiences, whether there's, you know, any realistic possibility that that those, any of those could happen is something that we'll be talking about. But there's a lot of other things we typically do in the spring that we're already starting to plan for. We have class placement. We have a schedule to build. We are rolling out the Social Emotional Learning Program Sanford Harmony next year. We have new students to enroll screenings and meetings. Hopefully virtually, if need be, of all of our incoming kindergarteners and other new students. We're holding CSC and Annual Review Meetings. And as Kyle also said, we we have to figure out how we would do any hiring that might have to happen. So that's that's also, these are the things that are kind of in the hopper. The last thing I wanted to mention is that is that we talked today about the importance of having the two elementary school staffs collaborate together. So we're working on how we could try to bring teams together between Sealy and Greenville to make sure that they're getting the opportunity to collaborate with each other as well and and have that connection that's so important for our whole elementary program. So that that's what's going on with elementary. I think I'm handing it back to Victoria.
Can you hear me?
I can now. I was breaking up there for a moment.
Saying I'm incredibly proud of this administrative team who has taken business as usual and educating students in a whole new way. I think that is a sense of what we've been working on in the immediate and what some of our next steps are. And I opened it up, turn it back to Alec and questions by the board event.
Right, so two things. First of all, for anyone who is dialed in. The form is open for questions, so please feel free to enter your questions. I know we've had some reports of people having trouble dialing in. I'm actually simultaneously chatting with the vendor, trying to see if we can solve those issues. There will be a recording of this at the end, but if we could start with any board questions, and I would ask you to, you know, use the the tool to raise your hand, and we will start with John.
Hi, and thank you very much to our administrative team for what you are, you know, doing under incredibly trying and novel circumstances. The only question I have is, you know, we consider Scarsdale something of a peer school. And they had, you know, a bit of a head start on us because of their ordered closures, you know, before us. So Victoria, could you state, I guess, to what extent are we taking advantage, you know, of, you know, of Scarsdale's kind of experience? And, you know, are there impediments to us sort of following their lead in any way? You know, just if you can speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, so there's always a difference between cut cutting edge and leading edge. And we like to learn from them in terms of what's going well and maybe what is not going as well. So we absolutely have been reaching out to them. As you know, a lot of our staff members participate in professional development with Scarsdale teachers through the Scarsdale Teachers Institute. So we are collaborating with them as as Paul does with all of the directors of of technology. I know, John, it was there was a second part to that, but yes, we're we're learning from and with all of the local districts.
But I guess the the only follow up would be, are you encountering any, I guess, particular impediments to, you know, sort of exploiting, you know, any, you know, any of the learnings we're getting from Scarsdale?
I I would say that we're also learning from other districts. We have certain situations where we know that synchronous learning is not the way to go for some of our families because they can't have all of the students doing the same thing at the same time or on our schedule. So we're finding the use of pre-recorded that some teachers have been using or items in Google in Google Classroom that gives our students some some other choices. But I actually will probably turn it over to any of my colleagues who might have some a more specific answer to that question.
You both, the administration want to chime in on that?
I mean, in fact, for my purposes, you know, I mean, I I I don't know that it's necessary to go into, you know, detail, so department by department, administrator by administrator, unless there's something important thing to add. You know, just the, you know, the notion that you that you're on top of it is, you know, is and and learning what you can and implementing what you can is sufficient.
Yeah, and and I think, John, the the team that Mike Curtin spoke about, our distance learning team. They are also learning from and with their colleagues who are maybe doing a little bit more and have been doing it a little longer than we have. So I guess I would say we're on top of it and and moving ahead.
Thank you.
Okay, I think Judy had a question.
Yes, Paul, I was, Paul, are you there? Can you hear?
Yes, Judy, I can hear you.
Okay, I just was wondering if you could tell us a little bit about the level of interest in from our students and teachers and seeking and actually coming in and seeking support help, meaning is it one or two? Is it, are we getting scores? But maybe also before that I should ask. I noticed that you were, it actually says right there in the technology that we have about 1,300 comb books being used for remote instruction. So by my count, that leaves us about 700 students short. Now, I assume in the, you know, very youngest grades that may not be an essential. But do we have students that are, who are not able to access their own individual computer, meaning maybe there's only one in the home and they didn't borrow another? I I don't know if you're aware of that, but can you just give us a sense of that?
Sure, we, as I said earlier, our one-to-one program, which consists of all of our students in grade five through nine, had devices. It's our sense that all of our upperclassmen have devices, but we did reach out to not just those upperclassmen students, but all of our K-12 students if they needed devices. And we had a pickup program before there was a full clearing out of the buildings. I want to say it was last Monday, and we had a handful of students come in and pick up devices. Going back to the first part of your question around support, we are not providing any in-person support. We are providing just as Eve and Mike and Kyle and everyone had mentioned, we're we're trying to keep up with all of the need for virtual support for the purposes of of my department. We have Andrea Nash, our instructional technology specialist. She and I are really trying to hold down the fort around instructional technology support. We have a database specialist and our other technical support specialists who are trying to keep up with login credentials, infinite campus support, a number of our other cloud services that are just kind of on the periphery of instructional technology support. So I think as as everybody said, it's really all hands on deck and the teachers, the faculty in general has done a tremendous job in kind of being the first line of support so that it takes a little bit less off, little less pressure off my department in in trying to field some of the very low level technical support questions that their students might have around maybe logging into one of our programs.
But so we do have students and or teachers who are reaching out and getting that that's what I'm trying to get a sense of. Every day we have people who
Yes, so much so that we've had conversations in some of the committees that we've been speaking about our online learning committee or a professional development committee that we've really, for the time being, had to take sort of a hard stance on not adopting any new technologies because we're really trying to get a good handle on the ones that we would be using during the the instructional day.
Got it. Thank you very much. That's helpful.
Sure, you're welcome.
Any other board members have any questions? Okay, then I think we will, at this point, I am not let me just double check. Yeah, I'm not seeing any questions entered by the public. So let's move on to the next portion of the superintendent's report.
Yes, so in in the category of going from our immediate areas of focus, and we talked a little bit about some long term areas of focus, the potential bond projects certainly goes into that longer term area of focus for the needs of the community. And how do we keep the 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 business of the district going right through through these very difficult times? So I just wanted to bring the board up to date on the two scenarios that the architect is working on right now. And there's one major difference between the two scenarios, and that is on the EHS campus. Both scenarios are exactly the same for the elementary schools. So scenario one on the EHS campus includes classroom additions and it includes the renovation, a total renovation of the A building. It includes the expansion and renovation to the cafeteria, reconstruction of the auditorium and renovations to the LGI room so that it it was more of a usable 21st century space than maybe more of the early 20th century, to be kind, space in terms of those immovable tables. This also includes renovations to the Arts Building. The Arts Building is the building that houses it's, we also call it the D annex, houses two classrooms and the district offices. Construction of an emergency access road, as as you know, in addition to needing space that was a big area of concern for health and safety in terms of access. We we have to have more than one access road to the EHS campus. This scenario also includes additional parking. At the elementary schools, a scenario one Greenville specifically includes a classroom addition. And that classroom addition would have six classrooms, a science lab, and a collaborative learning center. Sorry about the second L. It also would have an expansion of the gymnasium and the multipurpose room expansion because it would be used for different purposes, which would be more flexible space. The renovation of the gym to the cafeteria, servery, so actually, yes, and the renovation of the cafeteria to the band room and coral room. So in in the front of the building, so there are a few movements of spaces, and that's why they would be renovated and enlarged. And construction also of an emergency access road and additional parking, that's a problem at all three campuses and is included in both scenarios for all three campuses. At Sealy Place, scenario one includes a classroom addition. That addition includes classrooms, room for band and coral, science lab, and collaborative learning center, sorry about that L also. And the expansion of the cafeteria, which would have a servery and a warming kitchen. And as I already mentioned, construction of the emergency access road and additional parking. So the big difference with scenario two on the EHS campus is that there would be a new building A. The existing building A would would be removed, not until the new building A was constructed. So the the benefit of a new building A is that when that is completed, it would be able to house all of the students from the old building A, all of that classroom space from the old building A and the additional classroom space. The disadvantage of scenario one is when the new classrooms are completed. The disadvantage of scenario one is when the new classrooms are completed, the students would move into that building, and then we would have to renovate building A. So that includes a delay in scenario one. Back to scenario two, the expansion renovation cafeteria, reconstruction of the auditorium, also the same renovations to the LGI that I spoke about in scenario one. Arts building, same as scenario one, and also the access road and additional parking. And as I already mentioned, scenario two is the same for both elementary schools. So I've wanted to open it, turn it back to Alec and open up for any questions by the members of the board.
Okay, sorry, thank you, Victoria. Any board members have questions? Again, please raise your virtual hand there, Monica.
When will we see these drawings from the architects and have some rough numbers?
So that was expected tonight, until our world turned upside down. So we will, we will plan for that. The board committee and finance committee has looked at some preliminary and has asked the architect to work on these two scenarios. So we will have something ready for the board and have to figure out how we're there that and have that public meeting.
Thank you.
Judy? Judy, do you have a question?
So I'm sorry about that. Is, what would be the plan for the students if we went with scenario one? Where would the A student, A building students go? Do we, do we have any idea yet, or is that still under, you know, discussion?
So basically, they would move into the new building, but we would still have the constraints of space that we have now because...
No, 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 under the renovation, under the renovation.
Yeah, that's what I mean. So there would still be new classrooms built, right? There would still be an addition. So what, once that addition was completed, the students who were currently meeting in the A, in the A building would move to that new space? And then the A building would be renovated. But, but it just takes longer, so we still wouldn't have the additional space we need. We would have to wait until the A building was renovated to see the increase in space.
Where would that additional space be built?
Can someone help me out with that without the plan in front of me? I'm forgetting where that addition was. Kyle, do you, or...
Hello, this is John.
John, go ahead.
Hi, John.
There'll be an addition built onto the A building with it, with extra classrooms. And, you know, with the other spaces that get renovated, we'll try to manage as best we can to place the lost classrooms from the initial, the original A building, which will be, once the addition on the A building is opened up, we'll start working on the existing A building. So there'll be approximately 14 classrooms that will have to find room for the students on the campus. If we are unable to satisfy that, we'll have to get portable classrooms.
Got it, okay. In the, in the renovations versus the new building, would the total amount of ultimately rebuilt and new space be essentially equivalent? Or is there a difference in the total new space?
Roughly the same. We're kind of going with the number of classrooms to build to satisfy our expected capacity in the future and the shortfall we have right now for opting at more of an optimal level, which is 75%. So the issue we have with the renovations is part of our classroom capacity will be in like the second phase of the existing A building to be built and what to do with those students in the meantime.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I really followed the last part of what you said.
The biggest challenge with the renovation part, scenario one, is once we open up the addition to the A building, we have to find the space for the students that would have occupied the original A building that's going to be renovated. Naturally, the new part of the A building would, could accommodate some of those students, but, you know, we'll have to find places around the, you know, manage the...
I'm sorry, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I believe Kyle had something he wanted to say.
I was, Victoria asked for some more details, but John jumped in, so I will retract that hand raise.
Do we have any more board questions on that? So is there, Victoria, is there anything else on that part of the update?
No, I think that's it. I look forward to moving ahead with the full presentation with the architect and starting to talk about the dollars associated with these scenarios.
All right, I have a, I do have a first question. Is there any more board questions at this point? Okay, the question is from our friend Dylan Pine. And the question is, in scenario one, would the renovation of the A building allow for a second floor? Or would it be a single level expansion of the footprint? Let's start with that one. He's got a two-part question, but let's start with that.
John, do you want to take that? Was it, is the renovation two stories? Was that it? The renovation, correct?
Sure, I'll take that one.
Thanks, John.
Yes, the addition on the A building could be two stories. If we were to start out not having two stories, we would construct it so that the foundation and the steel columns could handle a second story in the future. So depending on what direction we wanted to go as far as the footprint, it could all be laid out on one level, or we could make it two stories to take up less space back there. That part hasn't been determined yet.
Right, okay. And the second part of Dylan's question was, in scenario two, is the intention that the A prime building would be a multi-floor building with generally the same footprint?
The, the new A building, so to speak, would be built behind the campus somewhat, kind of in the back of the area behind B and A buildings that are currently now. Once that was constructed, and it would probably be a multi-story facility, then the existing A building would be abolished and removed.
Okay, thank you. Just look to see if there've been any follow-up questions. Do not see any right now, so I think then we can now move on to the... First of all, thank you all for the updates, and I will say some things when we get to the end here. But thank you for taking the time to put together these updates. As I know quite well that, you know, there isn't nearly enough time to do the things we need to do, much less try and put together, you know, presentations for us. But we very much appreciate, you know, so that we can keep informed and we can help keep the community informed of what's going on. And like I say, I'll say a little bit more at the end here. But at this point, I think we will move on to the consent portion of the agenda. So I guess I would, oh, wait a second, we do have some questions. Marikita?
Yeah, I just wanted to also, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to also thank everybody for, for the great presentations. I think that, you know, now more than ever, it's so important to be transparent with everybody about what's going on, about both the things that are going well and the challenges that we're facing, especially as a, as a public district and a public school system. So I really appreciate both the work that's going into actually doing the, the transition to, to distance learning, but also the work that you're doing, to be clear with everybody about, about what we're doing and what we're trying to do and the challenges that come along with that. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you. John, your hand is still raised. Is that from before, or was there something you wanted to add? Looks like...
That was from before, I removed it.
Okay, okay, and John Faust, your hand popped up and went down. Is there anything you wanted to ask or say? Okay, then let's move on to the...
No, I just got logged out and logged back in, so that was that.
Understood, thanks. Okay, so let's move on to the consent portion of the agenda. So I guess the first question is, are there any items in there that any board member would like to, either has questions on or for some reason would like to have dealt with separately? And if so, raise your hand up. John? Or was that just from joining again? Faust, sorry. Yeah, yeah, I hadn't popped up on my screen.
Yeah, it's weird. I'm not even touching my phone, and it keeps putting my hand on.
Okay, no worries. No worries, I'll just ignore you.
Yeah, see, I just, I just turned it off, and now it went back on.
Okay, okay, fair enough. Well, if you, if you need to just, there it goes again, I see it pop in. All right, so are there any, I will ask again, are there any questions about the consent portion of the agenda or any items that any board member would like to take separately? If so, just raise your hand. I'm not seeing any, so if I could ask for, oh, sorry, Victoria, so if you could make the ask.
Yes, yes, I'd like to ask the board's approval of G personnel, numbers one and two, H students, number one, and I business, there are no budget transfers, so just number two.
Do I have a motion to approve? I have Marikita seconded.
This is an actual hand raise.
You were so, Marikita seconded by Monica, then all in favor. That is unanimous, so that is approved, so thank you very much. With that, first, so at this point in the calendar, we have a as-needed meeting scheduled for the 31st. At this time, it does not look like we will need that meeting, in which case our next scheduled meeting will be the 14th of April. We will discuss that again probably tomorrow. If for some reason we decide we need it, we will obviously make that known to everyone. But I just wanted to, you know, take a minute again to thank everyone involved for the phenomenal job that is being done. I, I know the, it's, it's, you're really being asked to do impossible things, and you, everyone has been rising to the occasion and above. I, I know I've tell people constantly, and this is sort of specifically about Victoria because I spend so much time working her with, with her on this, but I know it applies to everyone else because of what's going on. But I am literally spending probably 10 hours a day on this. But for every hour of that that I spend with Victoria, I know that there have either been countless hours that went into what has been done just so that she can bring me up to date, or it's discussions between us to make sure we're on the same page about how to move forward, which then leads to many, many hours of what she has to do afterwards to follow up. So I'm just incredibly thankful to all of you. I'm very thankful for Victoria for, you know, the partnership that we've developed in these, you know, very trying times. And I know we are a, a long way from being done with this, but I am seeing what has happened so far with so little warning preparation time. I have full support that, you know, we will, we will get through this and we will, you know, as a district, as a community, continue to do what we're here to do, which is take care of our students. So thank you all very much. It is very much appreciated. Sorry, Judy, did you want to have something say?
Just very quickly, I cannot get over how thorough this was. And Alec, I so appreciate everything that you have been doing. I appreciate especially you sharing with all of us just how much work has gone in on both your end in particular, as well as the entire administrative and faculty team. What is going on now is obviously unprecedented, and the extraordinary energy and care and dedication of the entire team really ought to be commended beyond simple words, but that's all we have right now. So thank you all.
Thank you very much. Marikita? Do you have your hand up there?
No, no, no.
Okay, Pamela, is that your hand up? Okay, in that case, can, I have a motion to adjourn. John, seconded by Marikita, we are adjourned. Thank you all again, and unless we tell you otherwise, we will be back on the 14th of April. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Alec. Thanks, thanks, team.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Stay safe out there.